My name is Beth Ching and I'm the Clinical Services Manager. It's one of my responsibilities, I'm in charge of some of the intake processes along with Mary Jo Bacon. As you know, we have two different sets of regulations for early -- for the regionals there. One is the Lanhaman Act, which most of you are familiar with. The other is Early Start. The difference is, is two sets of regulations in different age groups of totally different criteria. So I'm going to go through them both differently in kind of the same sequence so you kind of get a feel of the difference. So I'm going to start with Early Start. Early Start is like an early detection prevention program, if you might say. And it is for children zero to 36 months. And it's for these kiddos that are at risk. And what the state has decided is under a federal program with IDEA. The kids have to present a certain percentage of delay. And we measure that by doing developmental assessments. And within like zero to 24 months and 24 to 36 months, they need to be missed delay. So for example, you know, if you could think of a child who's 12 months old, what a typical 12-month-old is doing. They're starting to maybe toddle around a little bit, you know, you definitely can take them shopping. Okay, so if a mom calls in and a 12-month-old is having difficulty sitting. You know, most kids sit around six months of age. That's about a 50 percent delay. That child's going to qualify for a program. So everything is measured by developmental milestones, percentage of delay. And so every time we go out to see these children, they're always measuring those same parameters over and over again. To see improvements or to tweak a program up again. The other area that, you know, qualifies for us for Early Start is to establish risk. So that would be like, a baby goes, is born and by facial characteristics, the doctor would determine that they might have Down Syndrome. And they'll draw blood and find out that that baby has trisomy 21, 21st chromosome. So we already know because we've done studies on these kinds of babies, that the outcome in the future is going to be a significant developmental delay. But right now, that baby's just fine. So that child will qualify for us also. So we have, we have this program. The nice thing about it is children develop very quickly. They have a small window of time when they do all their development. So there's very easy access. Anybody can refer. A doctor's office, a family member, a parent, a pediatrician, a neighbor. The only thing is, when a family refers to whoever it is, the mother has to be willing to follow through with it. Because if the mommy doesn't think there's anything wrong with the baby, she's not going to want your services. So it's up to us when we answer the phone to let them understand, you know. We usually walk them through the process. We ask lots of questions. And then we'll go through the intake process with mommy's approval and get to the bottom line there. How do you, how do you refer to us? We have a large volume, so now we will take referrals whichever way you want to communicate to us. Email, fax, mail, face-to-face, through many just different hospital discharge programs, through community agencies, sky's the limit. And nowadays, it's almost quicker if you can email us because we have two intake clerks and they're on the phone all day long. So it's definitely. One of the slides I show, Adriana and Teri are intake people. And we're going to gather pertinent information, name, address, et cetera. If there's any piece of that link missing, we can't move on with referral. We need to know who the mommy and daddy are. We need to know the baby's date of birth. We need to know where they live. So a lot of those parameters are very important. Once the baby goes through that process, we're going to do a mental assessment. We're going to make sure we do two assessments, two different disciplines, within 45 days, in the natural environment or in the clinic with the parent's consent. And once we have all that determined, the team will decide if the baby's eligible. If the baby's eligible, we'll go ahead and put what we call an IFSP together, an Individualized Family Service Plan, which will list all the baby's developmental domains. And then once we decide what the domains are, talking with the mommy, we'll set up a plan of action. Are we going to put an infant program in, physical therapy, speech therapy? Are we looking at autistic tendencies? Maybe we just need an overall developmental program? Maybe we need to put applied behavior analysis in there? So it's all to the team at that time. And then we'll go ahead and decide purchase of service. Now, when we do that initial assessment, if it determines the outcome is that the baby is not eligible based on percentage of development, then we'll go over that with the mom. We'll show them how the gap isn't widening up, but that's a good thing. And then we'll go, where do we go from here? For you to a childcare center or something in your neighborhood? Or give the mommy different developmental steps to work on? Give the mom a notice of action? Can always call back and do a referral again in six months if the baby just isn't proceeding. So it's sort of a fluid process and we just have that dialogue back and forth. If the doctor's concerned, we'll take it for the next step. So it's, it's not ever closed until the child turns 36 months. Does that make sense? In a nutshell. Okay, so let's go on to the Lanhaman side. The Lanhaman side is completely different. So it needs to be a disability that's going to be considered lifelong. There's going to be developmental deficits that will continue indefinitely. And it needs to happen before the person is 18. And we know it's autism, epilepsy, cerebral palsy, mental retardation, and a fifth category. So the intake for this is a little bit different because it needs to be driven by the parent. And if the parent is in denial, it's not going to happen. And we're not going to know about it. The parent or the person themselves, I don't know if that ever happens. But anyway, there's a lot more information that needs to happen. And with Lanhaman, there's 120 days. With Early Start, because the babies are little and development happens quickly or doesn't happen, it's 45 days. So there's a lot of difference in two programs. Okay, so on the Lanhaman side, word refer, I have a slide here. You can refer to Evelyn or Wendy. It's by county. And probably the best way to get ahold of them is through email or phone. And again, their process is going to be very similar. They're going to need a lot more information because when you come in, it's a Lanhaman side. And we decide that you're eligible, we're really committing ourselves, the regional center, for lifelong eligibility. That's what, that's what we are intent to, and so we don't want anything that's a little bit sketchy. So we're going to get as much information as we can. If the child's in school, we're going to get a copy of their individual educational plan. We're going to get any medical records we have, any hospitalization records, if there's been any therapies. If it's an adult coming in, we're going to need proof that this happened before they were 18. So there's a lot of paper gathering that happens in these 120 days. Once all that paper is gathered, then it goes through another process. Depending on how much we gather, whether we're able to come to a conclusion, we'll probably bring you in for a medical review with a doctor and a psychological review with a psychologist. The doctor will review cerebral palsy and epilepsy. The psychologist will review mental retardation and autism. And there's a report that we fill out from the state, it stands for Client Diagnostic Evaluation Report. There's very specific parameters in that report that has to be filled out and lists major deficits. So if somebody comes to us, let's say from the school district, they're being followed by a school for autism, that doesn't mean that they're eligible for us because the schools have labeled them autistic or the physician. We have to follow certain criteria set up by DDS to make sure that they qualify under autism disorder. And that can mean major deficits. And a lot of times, mental retardation will be a co-according diagnosis. So you can see, it gets a little confusing for parents because they call in and they want eligibility. They don't understand. And for us, everything is a term by age. The age determines what program they're eligible for. The program determines the timelines. The notice of action is different. The way we refer is different. For the Lanhaman side, once we do the psychological and the medical, then the team comes together. We sit down with the family. We decide whether the consumer is eligible or not. If they're eligible, the case gets assigned on to a case manager for services and the whole kit and caboodle. If they're non-eligible, we explain it to the family, again, refer them to community resources. And note of action is given, the family, it should not be a surprise when they receive it in the mail. It's part of our formal process. Just in a nutshell, the volume that we have, in Early Start, we're receiving about 800 inquiries a month. We're opening about 300 cases. We're currently serving about 33, 50 babies at any one time. For, for the Lanhaman side, remember, they have longer timelines. They open about 120 cases per month. But they have about 600 or 700 cases in the hopper at any one time and anywhere along this process. And working with the courts, social services, foster family agencies, et cetera. So it's very challenging. One of our, probably our biggest challenges is that we have a large geographic area. It's very inexpensive to live out here. We have a lot of growth. And these timelines are real. Families can appeal us. And on both sides, I think we're really short-staffed. We're trying to do our best. It's really difficult right now to hire a psychologist. We've been trying for a while. We've been understaffed for some time to bring in a psychologist. But you can see, if the, if the foundation isn't there, we can't move forward. So we're doing the best we can and it seems to be working well. Other than just being short-staffed and people finding the resources that we need, that's kind of how we do it here. Have any questions? You've got the numbers on there to call. You can call me, email me, or any one of the intake people along with Mary Joseph Bacon. And again, sometimes families feel like maybe they're, they haven't been answered. Sometimes we'll get a call from DDS. And it could be as simple as mom called up the mess, but she was talking so fast we couldn't get the phone number or something. And so we're really waiting for them to call back to complete the call. But for the most part, I think most of our families are really happy with our process. Thank you.
Quick question. Question. I heard you say if they were an adult, so if they were 20 years old, they can apply for regional center services? If they can show that they had an, say they had, just hypothetically, an ID.
Correct, correct.
In high schools. I didn't realize that.
Yes, and you know, that does happen. We have a 50-year-old right now who wants to come in saying he's autistic. That's a far stretch. But it would be possible, families in denial, parents are getting older, they didn't want services before. Child is in special ed. And now they're wanting services. Parents are about maybe in their 50s, 60s, maybe they're not healthy.
They're young, they're my age.
Exactly. So there's different, there's different reasons even in the 30s. And a lot of times, a lot of these families are keeping these consumers in their own home. And now it's really become a hardship. They need the regional center.
Nice presentation.
Good evening, everybody. I hope that you have really enjoyed this special presentation that we have thrown at you with the recognition of the service providers and the consumers and intake for their wonderful presentation. The meeting was a pitch week in session. And at this point, I'd like to just acknowledge that a few weeks ago, and this is very difficult for me, a few weeks ago that we had, we lost a very dear personal, or sent to L.A. Regional Center, Mary Man Clark. She was here for 38 years. So I'd just like to ask that this moment, that we could just take a moment of silence just in reverence for Mary Man. Thank you. Dr. Kupp, I have to leave because of an emergency, so right now I'm going to try to fill in for him. So we're going to have our guest recognition. Have you had a guest here tonight? If you can stand. Okay, so apparently there are no guests here and we all know each other. So we're going to move forward. We're going to have our minutes from July 9th, because there was not a board meeting last night. So the minutes for July 9th. We will be approving those minutes. If there are any corrections or amendments, whatever.
We got that set of four minutes a month ago. And we, and we did not resend those to you.
July 9th.
July 9th meeting.
Then I assume that you're, since we have no comments or no corrections, I assume that the minutes will stand approved with necessary corrections if there are any. Because we can't leave them now. We have a motion in the second. If the minutes stand approved with necessary corrections, question? If there's no questions, the minutes stand approved. Okay, next we'll have our public input. And the comments are limited to five minutes per person. Our first person is Greg Daywood.
Do we not need to vote on that?
No way.
The motion in the second?
We did. For the minutes?
Two of us didn't hear.
Oh, you didn't hear it? Oh, so sorry.
Okay, I, I, yeah, I'd vote for it. It's just we didn't hear.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Glad you could be here tonight. I even have glasses for dim light, so close, far, and everything else. Previously, I've spoken about addictions before and it continues to be a deterrent. I placed a copy over near Carol and a copy over here of Mr. King. I think that eviction sometimes can be a mean to any resident of facilities who want to bring up concerns. I have provided to the board the commonly used criteria facilities presented to community care licensing as a means regarding addictions. In that particular case, it's designated as exit criteria. This is actually just copied out of a contract a facility has for community care licensing. None of the listed criteria includes addictions for complaining or bringing infractions to the attention of the proper authority or person, but seems to clarify that facilities in total charge. In particular, in this particular case, number six says a facility can evict a consumer for refusing medications. And as I recall, the rules or regulations say that a consumer has the right to refuse medications if they so desire. In 7B, it says that they may evict if a failure to comply with the law after written notice of the alleged violation is given. It does not include IRC or another representative copy as to what the, what the residence being served. 8A is very interesting in that document that I've given you a copy out. It says a three-day notice for good cause due to bad behavior threatens self or others. And it's not addressed as to numerical issues, but needs to be especially, these, these concerns need to be looked at, especially for level, like 4I, where they're supposed to be helping with behavior and that kind of thing. In letter B, the assumed community care licensing, it says no approval within two days of them notifying community care licensing. It's on page two, that they're going to assume that they found an approval for a three-day eviction. And anyone that knows community care licensing knows they're never going to react in two days. I think this template shows an intent of intimidation. Just like the whistleblower provision for employers of an organization, there needs to be a similar mechanism for residents and facilities and for their supporters like family, friends, and if they're hand or through the conservative. I also thought it would be interesting to suggest that on the other document I gave you in D, most of the facilities are already supposed to be having a lot of statistics. I would think that this would cite regional center a lot of time, whereas the CSCs could be emailed these stats before they go to a meeting for IPPs or IEPs. And that way, the CSC could spend more time with the consumer determining what it is they'd like to do, how safe they are, and what else is going on in their life. Plan of work from the CSC needs to be done at least, I was also thinking about saving time too. Pardon me, I'm skipping ahead. Needs to be done at least in one week in advance. Some of the materials I was reading in the minutes, they were talking about some of the frustrations and so on. So if the CSCs did a plan of action for their following week and folks could look at it, then that might help folks see where they're at, what their plans are, and how to assist them. Along with management even doing a two-week one, and that could go to a higher beyond that. I was also interested in the cultural change in the minutes that were provided this time and the intent to spend around $6,000 to affect that. No doubt, cultural change is needed, but with all the resources you've got here and everything else, I would anticipate with the past 40 years, et cetera, that something could be worked out within the organization. You have a great organization here and a training to be civil with one another. It seems very interesting to me how you'd be willing to attend it for free, seeing the folks pull out of the field for that and so on. I think that's going to be a real challenge for you all. The last thing was, I did get a copy and that was in the pocket, Teri one. I didn't get the letter to Carol, which kind of caused me concern. The lady was saying about her resignation. And if there's not support for Carol and there's a showing of disloyalty and a challenge to her authority, I think the board should assist Carol in that matter also. Appreciate your time consideration.
Okay, next is Kristi Renee Supal.
Hi, Teri, this is Teri. Hello, good evening. I have a couple of issues I wanted to bring up. I had some friends that are going to be here tonight to go over the family advisory committee slash parent advisory committee that was supposed to be on the agenda as an item, but is not. They, they got sick. I don't know if they're here or what's going on. So they couldn't be here, but I have emails from them that I can provide to the board about their feelings about having a family slash parent advisory committee. I wanted to bring it to your attention also that I requested from the Department of Developmental Services, the report that is supposed to be submitted about the composite, composition of the governing board. Under 4622.5, August 15th of every year, the governing board has to submit a report to DDS about the composition of the board. And I asked them for that, so I want to make the board aware of that. Let's see. The emails I have from the, the parents also go into detail about SB 946, which is the autism insurance bill. And this is something that I've been bringing to your guys' attention for, I think, since March of this year. And last time we were here, several of you said that you didn't know what ADA was, which was concerning to me because that means that possibly autism isn't represented on the board, this board. So the, the main concerns about SB 946, of course, have to deal with copays and deductibles. A lot of parents are looking to regional center to see what will happen if they have to go after private insurance to find these services, and they go to the regional center. And I have a, I have a big concern, if this board is not aware of what ADA is, how would you know how to respond to what's on the agenda this evening in regards to SB 946? I did get the original packet with the letter that great Mr. Daywood referred to about the cultural change. And I, I thought that was unprofessional personally to be in a board packet. So I wanted to make my sentiments known on that. What else? And like I said about the family slash parent advisory committee, I am concerned that it was at the last meeting in July that someone had said, let's have it on the next agenda, and it's not on the agenda. That's highly concerning. So I think that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, fair. It was asked beyond the agenda and we were told by staff that it's in the minutes. It would be, what's the status?
The status is, we've been doing some research on how that was organized in the past. And we will be ready to report to you at the next meeting.
Do you have your hand up? The net? Yeah, that's okay, thank you. Oh, yes. As regards the statement of the board not representing autism, I have two sons that are autistic. They are part of inland regions.
And since we are sharing our backgrounds, I was a legal guardian for 16 years of my grandson who was also autistic. So I do find it a little offensive as an assumption, because we're not Johnny-on-the-spot with every piece of legislation, that we're not aware of what's going on and we're not representing an area of the consumers.
May I respond?
I don't believe you get that.
I'm not finished either. Point of interest, I have a son who has autism, who is a member or a consumer, client, consumer of inland regional center. And when it was stated last month, or not before last, it was not clear. We could not hear. They said ADA, then they said ABA. And we were sitting up here trying to figure out exactly what was said. So sometimes, it's not always heard properly. So when the sentence came out, we were.
You were ABA.
Yeah, we were trying to figure out what was actually said. Not that we didn't know what it was, but.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And so we'll move on to the next person, who will be Emily Ace Gilman.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board of Trustees, and Madam Executive Director. I am Emily Stilian, a family member and conservator. In recent board meetings during public comments, speakers have presented two requests, which I would like to address. One of these requests is for employee membership on the inland regional center board of trustees. My initial reaction was, and now continues to be, that to implement this request would seem inappropriate. It appears obvious, it only makes sense, that ethically, it would be not only inappropriate, but a conflict of interest for an employee to participate in the decisions which fall in the parameters of board membership. Such would include, but not be limited to, decisions affecting supervisory personnel or equally, decisions affecting fellow employees and determining employee benefits. A second request or suggestion is to implement a parent advisory committee. This suggestion seems curious, since the Welfare in Institutions Code mandates ample provision for both consumer and family involvement in decision-making through membership on the board of trustees. Such an advisory committee would add another layer of meetings, not only lacking democratic representation from the broad spectrum of parents and conservators, but actually would be redundant, since family advisors exist within the board by state mandate. In summary, for the reasons I have stated, the requests for. the requests for employee membership on the Board of Trustees and for a parent advisory group are lacking merit, and therefore are unadvisable. Thank you for your consideration and for your service to our families.
Good evening. I'm not used to limiting myself to five minutes, but I will do my bit. What I'd like to point out is, in August of this year, Senator Steinberg actually brought out the need, and I'm assuming that the board has been made aware, and if not, I can certainly provide for that. It is a document, and I have a tag, so don't worry, I won't have to search. It is entitled by Steinberg, "Demands Equal Distribution of Autismous Services", and advises that there has been a task force that has been designed or established in order to look into the disparity of services provided to individuals on the spectrum of autism in particular, or specifically, and how individuals that are of ethnic descent appear to be disproportionately disregarded in distribution of services. And so this is something that is being asked to be looked at. While I certainly do not disagree with that particular issue, what I would like to request of this board are a couple of things. First and foremost is the understanding that when we're looking at distribution of services, that we need to look at it equitably across all disabilities. And I would hope, and I have asked Senator Steinberg's office to expand this, to go beyond autism and to look at it for all of our consumers. I find it a little bit difficult and very disconcerting that we would begin to do legislation so solely on the basis of the diagnosis and not on the basis of need. These things are things that I think, as a clinical neuropsychologist, I have great concerns. I see individuals across all types of disabilities with varying areas of need, and quite frankly, the diagnosis is the least of the pertinent ones when we're determining need. It has to do with each individual's level of function, and their ability to advocate, self-advocate, who surrounds them, their socially phenomenal status. All of those issues factor in, and I think that there are many consumers that are disadvantaged with that. In light of that, I want to actually commend some of the actions that I've had recently with some of the directors, in particular with Lavinia Johnson and some of the program managers, who have been, I think, very receptive to some of my concerns with regard to issues that affect my program personally. But from the standpoint of what I'm here for isn't about my program. What I'm here for is to say, as a Latino vendor, that there are families out there that speak Spanish who don't even know I exist. And I gotta tell you, as a pediatric bilingual neuropsychologist, we're kind of a rare breed. We really are. And those of us who specialize with developmental disabilities, we're even more rare. We're committed to this. The bigger concern, though, again, is not me or my program. The bigger concern is that I think families are being taken away from the aspect of choice when it comes to issues of service. Years ago, when I went to Sacramento and testified about some of the concerns I had regarding this regional center, and I will say this publicly, as I said it there, my interest for doing this is to elevate regional center to what it is intended to be. And I am very disconcerted and incredibly concerned at the political and, quite frankly, PR debacle that has ensued since then. That certainly was never my intention, and I am personally appalled that it has gone to that level. But I do understand that there are a lot of other factors involved, and I'm not going to spend the board's time or this audience's time on the specifics with that. But I do want to go back and clarify one thing, and that is that when it comes to the issues of what I think this regional center could benefit from, one of those was the issue of transparency. That's what I asked for in 2009, and that's what I'm before you again to respect the request. There's been a lot of interest in what has and hasn't happened within this regional center, and I would urge this Board of Directors to please seriously consider addressing the issue of transparency. And by that, I think it is imperative that you, as a board, define what parameters of transparency mean. We have to be careful. We can't tear out all of our dirty laundry for all of public to see. That's just not prudent. By the same token, I think that it is very imperative that we are able to provide a level of transparency. Like, for example, who gets referrals and how does that happen? Why is it that some vendors get flooded with referrals and others do not? How did those decisions be monitored from the standpoint of those services and caseworkers and managers and folks who make the decisions through these programs? What are the oversights for those things, and how are vendors selected in that process? Most importantly, is where is the consumer and family's choice in this process? And that's the part that, for me, I think, needs to go into center stage. It was a few months ago that I was here, and was certainly impacted by some of regional centers' own caseworkers that stood up. And I was really, I guess, taken aback by the fact that we see a wave of purple shirts that was looking at the support that they were receiving from the union. I'm not gonna make a statement as to a pro or anti-union. I think that everybody needs to advocate for what they need to do, their work conditions, and all of those things. My question to everybody collectively, though, is what's the color of our consumers? Who stands up with what color shirt for that one? Because I think in the process, we have to keep them at the center of our decision. And whatever we do, I think we're losing sight so far of our consumers, and particularly of their and their choices in terms of what services are in their best interest. So again, I would just ask this board to please consider how you would address transparency. I would respectfully recommend that you design a committee that reports to you on the issues of transparency, and within that, to have all stakeholders involved that could represent that appropriately. I sincerely appreciate your time. Thank you so much, and thank you for all you do for this regional center.
Thank you. Vicky Smith?
Good evening. If at any time that you can't hear me, please let me know. I know that I have a tendency to mumble. I smash my words together, and I speak a little faster than I thought, probably.
Yeah, slow down.
I'm thrilled with the five minutes. Normally, I'm cut off after three, so... I want to thank you, first of all, because I just looked before I got up here, so I did look like a donkey. Your POS policies are posted on your website, so I want to thank you for doing that. Yeah, give yourselves a hand. The question I have is that they say they're revised in May. Are they also approved? That would be my question. So are they the approved POS policies? The second thing I wanted to talk about, and it kind of goes without saying, you have 17 members, according to your bylaws. It takes at least nine to have a quorum. You, as far as I know from the listing I received, only have one person who receives services from the regional center sitting on this board. It's really not so good, treating you out of compliance. Not that I'm telling you things that you don't know, but I'm not sure that you're actually marketing in the right areas either. As you know, because you're all from the inland empire, very few people, especially our clients, can afford internet. They're not gonna check RSC's websites. It's not gonna be their number-one stopping place. So maybe getting out some other means, even caseworkers dropping off a flyer or something along that lines, would get more consumers on this board. Also, meeting ethnicity that's similar to what you're serving is also a concern. I know one of your four board members expressed that. As far as I know, what's been disclosed to me, at least on ethnicity, there's currently one Hispanic on the board. You should be at least, I think, 60% Hispanic, so when you're recruiting, kind of taking those things into account. Because it means that we're just not representing the right way, according to the law. Not that y'all don't care, not that your hearts aren't there, and not that you don't have kids with autism, so... I would hope that people's diagnosis wouldn't deter a board from making the right decisions, anyway. I do want to bring a couple, another thing up that just came up. Historically, for those of you that haven't been on the board and haven't worked here in the past, this regional center always had three advisory bodies. One is required by statute, and that's the Vendor Advisory Committee, the Dinita Sitzler. Another one that's permissive, according to the Lanham Act, is the Consumer Advisory Committee, which Christian has been a part of before. The third committee that this regional center always had was the Parents Steering Committee. It wasn't called the Parents Advisory Committee because it didn't want to be confused with a PAC. So it was the Parents Steering Committee. It was actually the Parents Steering Committee, the Vendor Advisory Committee, and the Consumer Advisory Committee that made this very strong triad of advice to the board. Because the reality is, you can't be everywhere. You can't be with every single parent, from ones that are newly diagnosed to you, who've been in the system for a lot longer. So it's fine if people don't want to participate on those committees, or think that the meetings are redundant, but my thing is that if you have parents that are dying to have some kind of thing like that put together, then it should be put together. And this isn't the first time. Like, this isn't the first series of this asking. This asking has gone back probably five or six years. The Parents Steering Committee, actually, so that you guys know historically, was the committee that by volunteer were Patty Harold, Diane Kimball, even myself who was here, helping these parents get everything donated, from the generators to run the lights in the parking lot to the Coal Miners Foundation to do the barbecue. They're the ones that started the Family Fun Festival. That's what it was called. And now you're producing as this harvest festival, which I don't even know if it's trademarked. Somebody should check on that, in October. And it was supposed to be a resource fair for parents. So that's where your Parents Steering Committee came historically at this regional center. And they did that for a number of years, till it started being contracted, and then it eventually got dropped for some other contract reasons. So when you think about those kinds of requests, I want you to understand historically where this regional center came from, because I think it plays an important part in where it's gonna go. I at least hope it does. I do want to share with you the board a very serious concern that came into our office. I want you to be aware of it, because you ultimately are the responsible party for the contract that this regional center holds. It came to our attention, and we're going to ask that you investigate independently. We obviously will be investigating, and I'm sure there are entities, I hope DDS is here, that is looking into it as well. There is an allegation that in June, a mandatory staff meeting was requested. Mandatory meaning all staff must come, in which they were told by the director of this agency to vote no on the union. Let me read you directly out of the Lanham Act, because it's not only in the Lanham Act, it's required in the Lanham Act to be in your contract. Your contract that you're already on probation for. And I'm gonna read it directly to you, because I didn't make it up. It's in Section 4638 of the Welfare and Institutions Code. 4638 of the Welfare and Institutions Code. And it's pretty serious, because again, you're the board, you're the ones that hold the contract. Now you can see how old I am. Nonprofit corporations, nonprofit corporations operating regional centers shall not use state funds allocated to the corporation for operating the center for activities directly related to influencing employees of the center regarding their decision to organize or not to organize, and to form a union or to join an existing union because these activities are not directly related to the purchase of service to clients. State funds shall not be used for these activities by the officers or employees of the corporation itself, by the officers or employees of the regional center, or by an independent contractor, consultant, or attorney. State funds shall not be used to litigate the issue of the application of the National Labor Relations Act II, nor the jurisdiction of the National Labor Relations Board over nonprofit corporations operating regional centers. Nothing in this section shall be construed as limiting the employer's rights under Section 8C of the National Labor Relations Act. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limiting the use of state funds by the regional center in the employment of or for the contracting for assistance in good faith of collective bargaining. That's after you become a union. Oh, no, see, page one small. Or in handing employees grievances, including arbitration, under an employee-employee contract. The Department of Developmental Services is required to have that language in your contract. A mandatory staff meeting means that you paid all your staff out of operations to attend such a meeting, and such a meeting had nothing to do with the purchase of service. I'm asking that the board formally look into that issue, as it's an issue that the Department of Developmental Services also needs to look into, because it's a potential violation of a contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Valerie Salmons?
We'll pass. Yeah, we'll pass. Thank you.
You'll pass? You pass? Okay, so that's the end of our covered input. So now we'll move on to our committee reports. It's in West Carolina, it's a committee report.
I don't have Dr. Cutler's notes with me. I'll phone that. First of all, well, Alma asked me to go ahead with my report. Do any of the officers that were sitting on the executive committee wish to make a statement or report anything that came out of the executive committee meeting that you would like to...
I'm not prepared to make a coherent statement at this time. So I'll spare everyone.
First of all, I would like to introduce to the board Dennis Clyman, who has joined us as the Director of Employee Relations and Industrial Administrative Services. And he does come to us with a great deal of experience in human resources. Has worked with a number of large companies, and is used to working with large teams of individuals to help us move forward. Also, Duke Sape, who is in the audience, has joined us about two weeks ago as the Human Resources Specialist. And so those two folks, along with folks in Administrative Services, will be working together under Dennis. So welcome. Appreciate it. I just want to run over a couple of things, because people have stepped in and really worked hard in a couple of areas. Marissa Stewart has been managing the responsibilities for us with the leading of the Director of Finance. And she and her staff have done just an excellent job in this period of time. She had to close year-end, had to open the new year. We've been involved in rollover with the contracts for our consumer services. We've been reviewing new contracts for services and funds that need to be set aside and allocated to meet those needs. And she is just beginning to work on the budget for 1213, so that we can move forward with that. And we'll be working with the Business Committee on Thursday at their meeting to review that draft of a budget. And then she also helped work on re-establishing our line of credit with human pain. And we are waiting for a response on that. But Marissa and her team have done an excellent job, and thank you very much for stepping in and picking up all of that work. Salon and his, Salon Escobar and his team have been working on a number of things, and reorganizing some of the functions of that department that includes resource development, transportation, community placement from state institutions, quality assurance, and changes that were made for community awareness and to train the community. So they're moving forward in those areas. Lavinia and her team, this includes intake, early start, and children's services. And you'll be hearing tonight about where we are with the Senate Bill 946 in relationship to insurance and co-pays as it applies to ADA services for children. Margie with Transportation and Adult Services and Medicaid waiver. Next month at the board meeting, Margie will be ready to go over the Medicaid report for you, so you'll have that as a status. We only had four major areas that needed some correction, and those have pretty much been taken care of. But we're really pleased with the teams and the work that the staff have done to make certain that all of that is in order. I think you're well aware that we are on probation, and there are things that DDS wishes to talk with you about. They meet and do have a conference call with the executive committee, usually about every, I think, day, and they're a little bit behind. And they're going to be coming to meet with you face-to-face in, well, not next week, but following week. You have the dates of September the 19th through January 1st. And so they'll be in the room with all of the staff at that time. And so they'll be in the room with all of the staff at that time.
That's next week.
No, it's not next week, it's the following week. Oh, it is, no, it is next week. You're right. You're right. Sorry. I lost the weekend. Yeah. But that's, and there are some really helpful and informational things in the packet for you that we would love for you to share with others, and get the word out on some of these special events that are taking place in the community. Any questions?
Questions? Questions? Okay, we'll have a financial report from Mr. King.
I have a question.
How long is this going to do? First question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Skimmens, I wanted to know, the two appointees, the two new folks that joined the relations and, those two relations, are those new positions or replacement positions?
They're replacement positions. They are not new. We did restructure the position that was held at one point in time, the Director of Administrative Services, and put Human Resources under that, and have changed the title. So it's Director of Employee Relations and Administrative Services. Thank you.
Marissa.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kegger Prusen. The final 2012 budget that ended 6/30/12. Total budget awarded in a regional center for the fiscal year ended 6/30/12 is $287,765,229. We have that in your pocket, it's a summary. Out of that, $45,369,412 was allocated for operations. We spent $45,824,820 for personal services and operations costs. Personal services is mostly related to salaries and wages, employee benefits, health insurance, and operating cost is, the majority of that is for RAMP and for data processing services. And if you take a look at this, it seems like we have a deficit, but we did have revenue mostly coming out of the ICF squad and a little bit of interest income. And we ended up the year with a little bit of surplus for $13,005. We did very well in operations. In purchase of service, total purchase of service dollars is $242,395,817. Out of that, we are projecting the total cost of POS for the fiscal year 2012 to be $246,210,143, leaving a budget deficit of 3.8 million. Please keep in mind that this 3.8 million has a built-in allowance of about $2.5 million for late bills. As of August 30, we paid around $815,000 in late bills. And this is a very, very aggressive late bills projections. We're hoping that we are not going to spend $2.5 million in late bills. So when we say that our projected deficit for POS 3.8, we're confident that we will meet or be below the projected deficit. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Has the state said what they intend to do for a deficit that we might have?
In the past years, in the entire 40 years history of the regional center, like I always say, they've always made good of the deficit in the purchase of service. In operations, if you come in a deficit, they won't give you the money, but so far in POS, they have always given it to us.
We haven't heard anything different.
We haven't heard anything different, sir.
Nice job.
Give me a question. It's your pleasure. You heard the report. It's your pleasure.
I'd love to have a separate report.
Thank you. Second moment. Listen, a second. I just, I couldn't hardly do it. A second moment. Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most is carried. Okay, so now we have our committee reports, and we'll have our vendor advisory committee report by Mr. Milton.
Did you all receive my memo? That's why I have not hit off. But I won't go over everyone, and keep us here all night. I did want to mention to you, because this happens only once a year, that we had the annual orientation meeting in August as well. So that allowed the VAC members to come together and kind of, for the new members in particular, go over how the meetings are structured and what we do, and give them a little bit of history about the VAC as well, how it's part of the Lattnerman Act. Talk about pre-bac meetings and how those are so important to get input from the vendors as well as to really problem solve, to be able to discuss common concerns, but also get some good ideas about how to solve those problems. So I just wanted to mention that, because that doesn't happen very often. The overall concerns, nothing new to you, that I'm sure you, we've talked about every time, vacancies, referrals, communication, and the budget. Those are common concerns across vendor categories. One thing that we did talk about that, of course, is very important to the vendors, is the impact if the November ballot, Proposition 30 fails, and then we have the additional cuts, the trigger cuts. That is something the vendors are very concerned about. In terms of the individual vendor groups, there are a couple of themes that came up in all the pre-bac meeting reports as well. The pre-bac meetings overall were a combination of getting input from regional center and some training on different things, like the ICPs, different things that were really helpful in the pre-bac. And also getting information from community care licensing, quality insurance. Apparently Vince Thompson had a very, very, very busy month, because he hit up so many of the pre-bac meetings. But there were some very positive comments about how the vendors really felt like they were getting good information from regional center, they were having their questions answered, and if the answer wasn't available, they were getting follow-up from regional center. The vacancy and referral task force for residential made a lot of really significant progress, and that seems to be going very well. There was a training also on POS and how to deal with delays, monopolizations, and address and resolve billing problems. One thing that did come up at the meeting that was a concern, and I don't think it was just one vendor group, again, talks about things we've talked about before, the need for transparency, the need to make sure that family choice and consumer choice is paramount, the need to make sure that we really are here as vendors and as the board to serve the consumers. And that's what we're all here to do, and we do it best when we work cooperatively Last thing I wanted to mention is we had a report on the membership committee, and we do have a couple of openings. In addition, the membership committee will be looking at some of the terms on the VAC this time. When we expanded last year, those of you that have been here a while will remember, we redid the bylaws and made the VAC bigger and more representative. And we tried at that point to make sure that we had good stagger, so that we didn't have all of the experienced board members go off at one time, but we didn't quite get there. So that's another thing that the membership committee will be addressing. We want to make sure that we don't have a real vacancy of experience on the VAC. So anyone interested in participating in the membership committee for the VAC, I end the memo, give contact information for Tammy Simpson, who's the chair of that this year. And one last, that was it for our meeting, but there was one thing that came across my desk that I wanted to share with you, because I think it's very important, you may not have seen it. It is a letter from Jerry Brown, our governor, and it's dated, let me just read it to you. National Direct Support Professionals Week. In this week set aside nationally to celebrate the direct support workforce, I want to express my appreciation for the contribution of direct support workers and the difference they make every day in the lives of Californians with disabilities. Direct support professionals provide essential hands-on support, training, and rehabilitation services to people with intellectual, developmental, and physical disability, including children, adults, and seniors. The work that these dedicated professionals do is vital to the physical health, emotional well-being, and safety, that is, to the quality of life of hundreds of thousands of Californians. The difficult and often underappreciated work of the direct support professionals can mean the difference between a life of dependence, segregation, and isolation, and one of self-direction, integration, and inclusion. With the graying of America and the increasing numbers of people with disabilities living in our neighborhoods and communities, the need for direct support professionals will only continue to grow. I join the ARC in United Civil Policy in California in giving direct support workers the recognition they deserve sincerely, Jerry Brown. And that is for the National Direct Support Professionals Week, which is September 9th through 15th. And so I wanted to share that with you and give you the opportunity to also thank the direct support professionals that are doing the hard work for our consumers. Any questions? Yes?
Just a quick one.
Yes.
On, under residential, or how do they call it? Because it says continued. Yep, just residential, combined events?
Combined levels, yes.
Right. On the very last line, second page of that thing, you talk about transfer of ownership. Does that include, a question was raised at one of the meetings I would add, that single-owned group homes, oftentimes it's a parent or a relative that owns it, and they're the only ones on the license.
Yes, I believe that is the exact issue.
Okay.
And that will be something that that task force I mentioned before
Right.
is looking into as one of the other things to address. But exactly that, where it's a family business.
And it's not a corporation.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll next have Mr. Miller, Consumer Relations Committee.
Actually, everybody here knows I have a loud voice, so I'm not giving you the microphone. Evening, Mr. Plight, your notes. Good evening, everybody. My name is Stephen Miller. I am Assistant Training Specialist here at the Regional Center, and also the CAC liaison. Since our last meeting, we have, the CAC is actually growing slowly but surely, but you know, we are working on getting our voices heard by attending these special events like the Tamikl Resourcing Fair, and Hesperia Days, and Disability Sports Festival, and you know, all these other events that we are doing to celebrate our 40th year. So, and we continue to make strides by doing that, not only by attending these different resource fairs, but we also do it by the advocates and I reaching out to the consumers at day programs. Or putting on special events like, you know, movie night, bowling night, and all these different events that will be coming up very soon. But on behalf of the CAC, I would especially like to thank the board and the rest of the staff here for actually supporting people. Because it's you who make the difference. And we can't thank you enough. We've come a long way from the 1960s to the present, where back then, people did not get that support. Today, we are getting more support and actually being able to live in our own apartment, or drive a car, or get a job, or get an education, go on and get a bachelor's degree, you know? So thank you. But you know, we continue to do a lot of things, you know? We've been a part of a lot of events, and the CAC is actually volunteering at these different events. So it's very good. But to sum up, one thing I want to really strive on and really get you guys all involved is the sixth annual, sixth annual Disability Sports Festival.
Yeah, disability.
A lot of people look at the word disability and say, this is for people with disabilities. No. That's not the thing. That's not the point. The Disability Sports Festival is a festival to get people of all abilities to be introduced into a healthier lifestyle of doing sports. There's well, elite-known coaches who come from all over the United States and actually coach on different sports, basketball, tennis, swimming, kayaking, wall climbing. I'm going to use Mr. Plight here. This guy is very strong. Last year, he did the wall climbing and climbed up four times. He is amazing. Just because people are in wheelchairs doesn't mean they can't do it.
And so are they here too.
Yep.
We're on it.
Hands-eyeing. So you know, but anyway, I left flyers out there, please register. The keynote speaker is Kerry Miller, who is a Paralympic who actually won a medal in London just last week. And just to give you a short summary of what happened to her, she was involved in a drunk, hit by a drunk driver in 1999 after she came out of the military, lost both legs, and now plays sit volleyball professionally. So she's our keynote speaker. This year, we were going to try to get Bethany Hamilton, but she's actually in Australia at the time doing professional surfing. So I hope to see you guys all there. If you have any questions, please give me a call. I can help you get registered. I have registration forms. You can go on disabilitiesportsfestival.com to register. And right now, it stands where we have about 250 people registered right now. We want to reach up to 800 people. One more thing from my director. On Saturday, September 22nd, is actually a Spanish conference called Unidos en Exito. Anyway, please come. It's going to be a very good conference. It's on Saturday, the 22nd here, from 8:00 to 4:00, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Britton from that committee.
Good evening. Probably the most important thing I've got to report to the board tonight is that as of about 10 o'clock this morning, we're fully staffed. Makes me feel very happy. Thank you, Margie, for your help. Other than that, Roxanne joined us in early August, and Christine Millen joined us this morning at 9:30. As she walked out of Cynthia's staff meeting, I grabbed her and said, you got the job, we're going to a client meeting. Very good client meeting, she's going to do well for us. Any questions? Do you want to go online, other thing now, or you want to move to the business? The question of checking account. Got a request in front of you that the Trust Committee is requesting that you approve that master trust be allowed to establish its own checking account with non pooled funds. These are basically an account that the trustee's fees goes into and the CHF contribution, quarterly contribution goes into to fund our operations. Leading this direction, the board would like to see the master trust be more, stand on its own, and by, currently the funds are mixed together with several other programs with the regional center. I think by, we feel like establishing our own checking account will have a little more control over and insight as to what funds we have there on a periodic basis when we need to. So looking for a motion for approval of this.
I approve it.
Well, actually, it's more of a point of order before we get started. I think I saw our attorney in the audience. My question was...
We can't discuss again. We have a motion on the floor.
I have a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you.
What are you moving, Tom? What is your motion?
I'm going to move that we have a separate distinct checking account for the Master Trust. So, we can have it on the floor and discuss it.
We got a second. Okay. Now, I'm going to ask my question.
No, I don't think, we have to have a second, pardon.
We have a second.
Owen said, "Got it."
We have a second, second.
Okay. The item on the agenda says proposed accounting upgrade. The item on the report says separate Master Trust checking account. The report says that what they're looking for is permission to establish an account. Now, I'm on the board and I read the agenda and I was looking for new software or something for accounting upgrade. I'm not sure, in the spirit of transparency and that real training we had the other day, that the agenda clearly provides enough information that a member of the public, and I'm not opposed to your idea, by the way, would be able to understand that they want to form, they want to get a checking account approved. And that's why we have an attorney. So, I would like a ruling from the attorney. I'm not trying to put the staff on the spot, but I don't believe that proposed accounting upgrade tells us what we're going to vote on. That's just my point. And that's why we pay that gentleman to make sure we stay legal. I'm not opposed to the idea. I just want to make sure that we're complying with the law.
I think you have a valid point that there may have been some confusion as to the agenda item. So, you can still have discussion on it and so forth. And, but actually, a formal motion and approval and so forth may have to wait till the next meeting.
I'm sorry.
No, you're doing it solidly.
Well, and I guess I have to assume, I'm not, yes. I have to assume responsibility for this because the conversation that Bob and I had, I was not clear about what he was really asking. And when we talked, it sounded more like an accounting upgrade of what we were doing and the way that the records were being kept as opposed to really truly establishing a separate bank.
I think this would go to, for Master Trust being able to account for our funds and report back to you. Because I, I guess...
Unfortunately, our attorney says otherwise. And he works for us to keep us from going to jail. If he says there's a question, then I think the item should be table till the next meeting. I'm sorry, I think it's a good idea. But you trained us, Steve.
That's good. You're listening, right? You're listening.
I want to get some for my 29 cents an hour.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
So, we'll table the agenda item for next meeting.
Well, we have to actually do it right.
So, what do we do with the self-imposed motion? Vote down? Table it?
Yes. We have to put it down, then we have to make a motion.
Okay, we need eyes and nays on this.
Okay.
Well, if we want a nays, then, right?
Yes.
Say.
All those in favor?
All in favor?
Nay.
No.
Nay.
All those?
Nay.
All opposed?
We're all opposed.
The motion is denied.
I move that we table the item.
You really need to ask your attorney again because if I'm pretty... We're going to have a preliminary procedure. You can't even move on it because you can't have a motion at all.
But we have to, we have to close our motion.
Well, you close it by saying it was out of order.
Out of order or lack.
That's all you do.
Or lack.
Because now it looks like you voted against it.
Yes. So, I move, though, that we do table this item until next meeting and we add it in the agenda properly so that we can vote on it.
That's a good...
So, I use discussion?
No discussion.
Okay. We sell, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, opposed. So, we table the motion until next meeting with proper information.
And Bob and I will get together and make sure that we're both on the same page and understand clearly what this committee is asking for.
Okay. Next, we'll have a report from the nominated committee by Ms. Mary Beth Fields.
Okay. We had a meeting, we had several meetings on our committee. Are we going to discuss the people that we, we are proposing? Okay. I was given this because Dr. Koller couldn't do his parts, Alma couldn't do her parts, and then I got to do Alma's part. So, I'm winging it, Alma. The nomination committee met on three different occasions with individuals who expressed interest in serving on the IRC Board of Trustees. After the interviews and much discussion, the nominations committee is recommending the following individuals to serve on the Board of Trustees. First nominee is Candy Sissel. Miss Sissel, could you please stand? Miss Sissel is a parent of two young adults with developmental disabilities. She comes to us with extensive experience with the DPP, Developmental Disabled Community. She is an advocate for special education. Our next nominee is Denise Fulsie. Miss Fulsie, could you please stand? Miss Fulsie is the parent of an adult son with autism. She also comes to us with extensive experience. She is the co-founder of the Inland Empire Chapter of the Autism Society and is currently a community transition advocate. Three. Jennifer Baca. Miss Baca, could you please stand? Miss Baca has experience working in multi-organizational committees which are designed to influence policies that regulate social service organizations and committees that oversee the operations of children's educational programs. She and her husband work with foster parents. I don't know if this is exactly how it is, so you might want to explain this later, maybe. If anyone has questions. But they work with foster parents to set up their homes and provide services, but... That's closed.
Yeah. I'm not jealous, are you?
Yeah, I'm not jealous. Okay. Our fourth candidate is Mike Nagar. Could you please stand? Mr. Nagar has a seven-year-old son with autism. Mr. Nagar has a great deal of experience in business and finance. He has a distinguished career in real estate and for the last 10 years in land development. After his son's diagnosis four years ago, Mr. Nagar started the Southwest Riverside Autism Task Force and have all cities and Riverside reviewing their city plans to incorporate people with developmental disabilities. He also serves on the, what, you're the?
Temecula.
Temecula City Council. And are you pro-Tim mayor?
Vice mayor.
Vice mayor. Thank you. The nominating committee is asking the board to confirm these recommendations.
Confirm the recommendations, so... It's your pleasure.
I would move we do this. Are we comfortable with how it was placed on the agenda? Would be my question before...
I believe it was placed like this and I made a report, which is...
It's a report.
If it's only a report, doesn't indicate that we want to take action? Are we...
Okay, so then we'll defer it to the next.
Yeah.
Until your old business.
Under Old Business.
But under Old Business, it says accept recommendations.
These are our recommendations.
Those are the recommendations.
But I didn't know they were, I mean, I didn't know until tonight that we were going to appoint somebody. But we can wait till Old Business and discuss it.
But didn't you get this at the beginning?
We can wait till Madam Chairman politely asks me to wait. I'm trying.
Okay.
So, are we going to address this under Old Business now? Please all.
Okay. Can I get a reread?
I have a question. We have to go.
No, not that. I was saying you have to reread it.
Oh.
I never have that long.
Okay. It was my understanding you have to do wrong. Sometimes I'm wrong. It was my understanding that the committee was coming together. Together? Together. That the committee was coming together to look at people that had been nominated, write up what it was we thought presented to our fellow board members for a decision today. I thought that's what our committee purpose was, so that everybody else didn't have to be involved in that part of the process and being trustees, good people. Like, we are in good standing with everyone that people would assume or know, not assume, know that we had the ability and the capacity to screen and present those people that we selected for you guys to yager and nag on. That's what I thought when I went to committee.
Are we discussing?
That was a question.
And isn't, we're not...
Okay, so then we have a report from the nominated committee. We're going to move on to Old Business. And, uh, first agenda on our Old Business, approval of committee membership.
Last month, in your packet, you had a list of all of the committees that were being put together for 2012, 13. And it has the executive committee, it has your officers, it has the business committee, it has the nominated committee, and then the auditing committee. And this is something that you had in your packet, ready to go for last meeting. And we canceled that meeting. So, this roster is what is being brought to you again to confirm these committees. Would you like me to read the membership or do you have that in permission?
I think we need to take this off.
The executive committee, the exec, pardon me?
Steve, take this off, the executive committee.
The executive committee, Dr. DuCatta, Board of Trustees, President Alma Derr, Board of Trustees, Vice President Mary Beth Fields, Board of Trustees Secretary, Patrick Keane, Board of Trustees Treasurer, Tom Cusman, Board of Trustees, Arthur Representative Carol Fitzgibbons, Fitzgibbons Staff. Business Committee, Patrick Keane, Board of Trustees Treasurer, Christina Benjamin, Board of Trustees, Jack Padilla, Board of Trustees, Stephen Ogleby, Community Member, Wade Wyer. I think that's correct. Is that right?
Yes.
Community Member, Gustav, Carol Fitzgibbons Staff. Nominated Committee, Alma Derr, Board of Trustees, Vice President Mary Beth Fields, Board of Trustees, Secretary Lynette Lowery, Smith, Board of Trustees, Carol Fitzgibbons Staff. I can Committee, Steven Streers, Community Member, Tom Chairman, Community Member, Paul Sandy, Community Member, Tom Cusman, Board of Trustees, Peter Astor, Board of Trustees, Patrick Keane, Ex officio, and Carol Fitzgibbons Staff. Those are your, that's the roster of your committee members. So then we'll move on to the next item. No questions? No discussions? Okay, we'll move on to the next item.
Don't we need a motion?
I don't know, you guys. I'd be so confused. I move to accept the committee as stand. It's second. It's been moved in second that we accept committee members. Question? The question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our next, I would accept the board's recommendation for resignation by Miss Phil.
Now, we're going back to where we were. Okay, board, that's a good recommendation.
Thank you, Mike.
No worries. No, I guess I'm waiting for someone to make a motion to approve.
I'll move that we accept the resignation.
I'll read the resignation. It was from Carmela. What is Carmela's last name?
Carmella.
Carmella, I've known her for years and I've never pronounced her name. "August 13, 2012, to the Inland Regional Executive Director and Board Members, Friday evening, August 10, 2012, I received a call from the Governor's Office appointing me to the State Council on Developmental Disabilities Area 12 Board. Therefore, with regret, I must resign from the Inland Regional Center Board because of the conflict of interest issues. As always, it was a pleasure being on the Inland Regional Board for the second term. Thank you, Carmela." I'd always like to be on that board. It was very nice. Now, you move that we accept that?
Yeah.
So, you've heard the resignation, sure?
I suggest that we send her a letter, a thank you letter and congratulations.
The other one that you have had from two meetings ago was one of our other board members who had to resign. It was Gregory Harrison because of transportation. And he really also indicated that he just doesn't really have the time to do it either. And he had submitted a resignation to you, but you just need to accept that in a motion for.
We should move that we accept both resignations.
Combine them into one motion is over.
I cheerfully second that.
Okay, it's been motion in second that we combine both resignations and accept them both in same letters. Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, the motion is carried.
Now, are we at the part where we ask for the recommendations to be accepted?
Yes, you are. You're here.
I have a question. I want to accept the foundation of the membership board. Now, we do. Miss Phil? So, now we're at the point of, uh...
I ask the board if I could get a motion to accept the recommendations for members.
And I cheerfully move that.
You make that motion?
It's a motion that we accept the recommendations for board members. Do you hear second?
Ask for questions.
Go ahead, Miss.
Okay.
All in favor?
Are we having discussions?
We're having discussions.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney. It's, I mean, I don't, I hope you guys get on the board. Don't, I'm not going to vote against you. That's not the issue. The issue is, we paid that man to give us training so that we didn't get in trouble. We didn't have the board back there, whoever, Area 12, filing complaints against us. The agenda is supposed to be, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, that a person in the audience reading this knows that tonight, we're going to be appointing new members to the board. And I don't see where it says that. I can see where it says we're going to accept resignations.
It says...
It says accept.
Resignations for what?
Hold on. You asked me what, Steve? I respond. I think both under committee reports where it says nominated committee, it's both info and action. And then under Old Business, accept board recommendations slash resignations. So, it's two separate items. It's an action item. I think it's sufficient.
Okay. Next issue then. Well, I'm sorry. Well, I, we have my big rubber stamp up here, but I'm not going to.
You're just going to jump in. Go ahead. Okay, my question is, for the people that were nominating, are they, do they need the composition we're supposed to have? Because I didn't hear the students or...
They're all, all of the recommendations are from Riverside, which was one of our target areas that we had to... We did interview other people. These were the four that we recommended.
And we did work very hard to look at the overall composition of the board. And we did work very hard to look at the overall composition of the Board so that we would be filling some of the requirements. And we did a pretty decent job of filling some of those things. And there are still some spots left for consumers. And the staff have been collecting lists for us to work with so that we can have consumer representatives on the Board as well. But we'll need to go through the nominating committee to do their interviews and discussion with them to see if they're wishing to serve on the Board.
What's our maximum number of board members? Is it 17?
It is 17. And right now you have 11.
What's four?
Well, as of this moment, you have 11.
That's what we're discussing, okay.
And your bylaws indicate that you have a quorum based on the number of members that you have, not the full size of the Board. So if you have 11 members and I think...
We're here.
Dr. Cutler had to leave, he was here for the getting. So you do have a quorum.
I have a question, Ben. With the numbers of vacancies that still remain, if those go to consumers, does that meet the ratio of consumers necessary to meet the requirement?
By adding four people, you're going to be at 15. So then you would have two additional slots for consumers. And there will be, Alma will be leaving in June, so that gives us some time to find another consumer that can go onto the Board and that will make your full composition.
How many consumers do we have to have out of 17? Four.
I'm sorry?
Five, three, seven.
You remember quarter five, yes. Because it's four point two five. Okay.
One quarter.
So four and a quarter.
Will be a round up or a round down on that?
Round out.
Round up to five.
It's got minimum 25%.
Thank you.
We had a question during public comment.
Is there a time requirement to fulfill that or is it your best effort basis?
We need to, it's best efforts and we need to make every effort possible to make that happen. We had some good strong candidates from Riverside and we felt that that was very important also because we knew that that was, was an area that we needed to fulfill.
We have geographic, we have ethnic, we have...
Unprofessional. During public comment, we had a, a comment regarding how we actually recruit for the Board. And I know we did significantly more than just put it on our website. Would you have a minute to tell us what else we did for the public?
Certainly. We did advertising in several papers that were Spanish-speaking and that assisted us. We also had an ad just in a general paper that went out to all of, most of Riverside County. And that was in English requesting skill sets and different ethnic groups as well as the intellectual disabilities. And then Christine and her access to public radio station did a PSA for us.
Thank you, Christine.
So we did have a great deal of publicity out there besides our website.
And you have been asking the CSCs for input about consumers as well. That's been ongoing.
Yes. And that's beginning to show. So we'll get that filled as well.
Last comment. I believe several meetings ago, it was requested by the Board, then when we had nominations for people, the Board received a short written synopsis. And except for the nice fact that I sit next to the secretary, I would not have seen anything until tonight. And if I didn't sit next to the secretary, I wouldn't have seen anything. And I believe we were told we would be able to get that back.
We will do that at the next time, Patrick.
Any other discussions?
Well, I, I think we have sufficient grounds to call for a vote, also because the candidates are present, I think that certainly counts or something. So I guess a call for the vote.
So are you ready to vote? Do you have a motion, please?
You have one.
Oh, that's right, we table it.
It's covered in front burner.
Where did we get?
Okay, so why don't we stop, please help me.
All those in favor? You're ready for the vote.
I said that. If you said we have to vote.
No, no, you asked. Call for the vote. All those in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Your motion is carried. We'd like to ask if the new members would please take a seat and join us. Thank you. And if any of you would like to say something short, it puts in a lovely debate.
I'm very honored to be on the Board and I look forward to working with everybody and making a difference for our consumers.
I pretty much second that. And one thing that wasn't mentioned is my extensive background in development, both pediatric and neonatal nursing. And I really look forward to working with all of our consumers. You know, even though both of my kids have different disabilities, I, I'm just really excited to be here and I hope that I get to bring lots of good things to the table.
Just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to sit on this wonderful Board and I look forward to the experiences that I'll be learning and from all the knowledge that sits here and look forward to it.
And thank you as well. I have a lot to learn, so I'll be looking to you folks to somehow guide the way and I'll be doing a lot of watching, but I guarantee you'll get my 100%.
And thank you, and it's not personalized. I'm glad of you.
Okay, our next item will be the manager's training proposal. Dr. Cutler was going to present that, but is he on emergency? Carol will present it to us.
In your packet, you did receive the one proposal. What, what staff have been asking for is the opportunity to have some managerial training in working with difficult situations and how to help get a more positive kind of working environment structured for staff. And we have two different proposals and they come at it from a different, both are different. One is providing a one-day training for managerial staff that is looking at ways to deal with conflicting kind of situations in the workplace, how to make it a more positive working environment and the things that you can do as a manager.